This meeting of the Finance and Performance Policy Committee. My name is Sahira Nas, I am a councillor in the Donal Ward and Chair of the Finance Committee. The meeting today is open to the public. The meeting will be webcast and recordings will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Please can I request all mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There's no fire test planned for today. If there's an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from Town Hall staff, Assembly Point is Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each Finance, Performance Policy Committee member introduce themselves and I'll start with you, Al.
Good afternoon colleagues, it's El Dod from Castlewood.
Garret Slater, Southey Wood.
Good afternoon, Abdul Ghum, councillor for First Park Ward.
Hi, Martin Furbs, councillor for City Ward and Green spokesperson on the committee.
Councillor, City Fox, Mayor Castlewood.
Councillor Sheffield, Mohammed Echolsaw.
Councillor of Commons, Chapman Mosborough.
Councillor Mike Leavie, West Echolsfield and Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you very much. Is there any apologies for absence?
No, Chair.
Thank you. There are no items which require exclusion of public can press for today. Item three, declarations of interest. Are there any members that would like to declare an interest of business on the agenda today? No. Item four, minutes of the previous meeting, these are on page 11 of the Agenda Pack. Are these a correct record? Yep, that's fine. Item five, public questions or petitions, there are no public petitions or questions today. Members' questions, item number six, we have not received any members' questions on this occasion. Work programme, which is on page 17 of the Agenda Pack. Fiona Martinez isn't here today, she's off sick, but Joan will talk us on that.
Thanks Chair. The only alteration that I can see from the paperwork is an item has been added, scheduled for the April meeting of the committee on changes to the financial procedure rules in part four of the constitution, which includes a refresh of contracts, standing orders to incorporate changes introduced under the Procurement Act and revision to internal procurement and purchase order thresholds, an annual refresh of the financial regulations following consultation with finance colleagues. That's all, the only change that I can see.
Thank you councillor Mohammed.
It's not in relation to that Joan, should be, but it's the ethical procurement. Do we have any further update in terms of government? When we're likely, because clearly we're holding back till the government, but clearly people out there are asking us when we'll have this policy. Philip's got an update for us.
The final bit of the guidance was published, I think, last week. So we're working our way through that and it's got some significant implications for public sector organisations, but we expect to have the policy ready for March.
In terms of the work programme, there are recommendations for approval, are we all agreed? Yep, that's fine, thank you very much. Item number eight, objections received from notices to dispose public open space at Junction Road Woodhouse, this is on page 29 of the Agenda Pack. Over to you Sean.
Thank you Chair. So the report today is to update on objections that are received on the sale of sites at Junction Road Woodhouse, following publications of notice to dispose of a site as public open space. So Property Services are in the process of selling the parcel land at Junction Road Woodhouse. This is a joint sale along with a private landowner for affordable housing on the site. The sale has been agreed subject to contract and planning, but before contracts can be exchanged, the publication of public open space notices must be fulfilled as a legal requirement. These publications have generated three written comments/objections from two local residents. The objections are contained within the appendix within the report, together with comments in red from Property Service colleagues against those. It's considered that most of the comments are relating to detailed design of the scheme and matters that would normally be considered through a planning application when it goes in. So the recommendation, the requirement that these objections are presented to Finance and Performance Policy Committee, but it's considered that the comments that are received are really matters that should be subject to a formal planning application when it goes in, in terms of the actual development of the site and how the scheme will be taken forward as a development. And therefore it is recommended, recommendation to committee is that we continue with the sale, as this will help contribute towards council's objectives in terms of providing housing and a capital receipt in terms of a disposal of the site and that there will be further opportunity for full public consultation through the planning process where the comments that have been set out would be fully considered. Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Fox.
Thanks Chair. Can I just ask through you Chair, what other alternatives do we have as a Finance Committee? Is it just straight, we have to accept this or we make the decision to sell or not sell? Is it straightforward, is that, that's what I'm trying to get at?
I think that is the purpose of today, the objections that have come through will, can get dealt at the planning stage. Would they be considered at planning or would the residents have to, again, put in their comments?
Thanks Chair, I think because the sites have been undeveloped sites for a number of years, then they're legally classified as open space, but obviously prior to any development, we would consult with planning colleagues to see whether we're bringing forward a site that would ordinarily get planning. Now, the advice at the time was that the site is subject and allocated for development and the questions that have come in are matters relating to the detailed planning and design. So it would, we can pass the comments on to planning colleagues, but there would be a full formal consultation through planning. So at this stage, my understanding is under the constitution, it's a requirement that where objections come in against a public open space notice, regardless of whether they are against the public open space notes or whatever they are, they have to be considered as part of this committee prior to any formal continuation with the disposal.
Thanks, thanks for that. If I may Chair, because what I don't want to do is set a precedent through this committee with the local plan that's coming, that's going to nominate, who knows how many open spaces that people in their areas where they live may appreciate that as green belt or their common land. And I was just wondering that obviously for us, when these areas go for sale, which there will be many through the local plan that has nominated various parts for development and taking it home from local people, I was just wondering what sort of decisions that this committee can make, or can this committee make, that the disposal of sale with recommendations, that's what I'm trying to get. If we can't, if it's a straightforward sale because the local plan says that's what the development or that's what's going to be there, do we then, as local councillors, have to amend or put amendments in at the local plan for that sale? Otherwise, in parts of this city, where will local councillors and members of the public be able to put their fears and their concerns at that initial stage? Or if it comes to committee and it's a yes or no, then to me, we aren't considering that and listening to local people, is there? So what I'm trying to get at is, will it go through LAX first, then come to our committee? Or will it be our committee that then puts it up for sale? I just foresee down the line, a number of issues coming up of what the local plan will throw up in local areas.
Did you want to come out? I think from my understanding was that it comes to Finance Committee only if there are objections, otherwise it goes straight to planning, it wouldn't come through our Finance Policy Committee, but I think you wanted to come in?
Thank you Chair, yeah, I mean obviously the question's an important one, but obviously I suppose it's just the remit of what you're considering today, which is just the sale and obviously, and the objections that you've received. The local plan, obviously then that's the planning, so this is, this is a commercial property decision you're making here, do we sell the land? And obviously it's come to you because we've had the objections, so it's those objections that you're looking at today. So it's quite a narrow brief, but obviously I do fully understand that with the local plan, that will obviously then have its own consultation process at that point. So the planning process, I mean, this is just the sale, it's not the planning and the local plan, there the next stage is on. But I agree, what you're, I think what you're alluding to is that setting the precedent that that's what we're doing, but it isn't. This is just purely contained to us making that sale. But it doesn't affect, you know, obviously we can't determine what the development's going to be, you know, if that's going to be approved or not, that's part of a separate process.
Okay, so just for me as a local councillor, where I know that one area's now being changed because of the local plan that was going to be a retail is now for housing, now that may be a different scenario, but that sale goes ahead. So I'm just trying to find where in this process, by the time it comes to us as local councillors and members of this Finance Committee, if it's a yes or no question, that's fine, if that's what our role is, I'm just trying to find through the process of when it goes up for sale due to the local plan, where in that process? Because when it comes to here, members of the public will probably not realise that we're not able, we can take into account their concerns, whether they be planning etcetera, but for us to say no, that this is a financial decision and then move on to the planning, I just, just for clarity, I just need to know in my mind, if that's what we're being asked is solely on a financial position, if that's our powers, then that's fine, I just want to know that that's the process, planning is totally out of my remit, let me tell you, but I understand that's where it goes. But I just wondered to know, is my position on this committee is a straightforward yes or no to the sale? Thank you.
Sorry, thank you for that, that was through the Chair. I would say that yeah, your remit is purely financial here and there will be ample opportunities through the local plan process and also, as Sean said, through the planning process for those objections or those comments to be taken into account.
Is that okay councillor Fox? I think there will be plenty of opportunity for councillors to get involved at the planning stage, but yeah, I understand where you're coming from with this one. Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, so we do have recommendations for approval on this. Are we all agreed? Yep, that's fine, thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, which is objections received from notices to disperse of public open space at Daniel Hill Street Walkley, and this is on page 41 of the Agenda Pack.
Thank you Chair, so similar to the last report, this is to report on a proposed sale where objections have come into the open space notices. The slight difference to this site is whereas the previous site was a joint sale with another developer, the sale of land at Daniel Hill Street forms part of a wider disposal project being conducted by the Housing Growth Team, where a piece of work was undertaken to look at where we could bring forward small sites to enable development across the city. An initial batch of approximately 25 sites were selected for further due diligence. Homes England provided some funding to do that upfront work, which also included consultation with planning colleagues for informal planning advice on each site. Daniel Hill Street was identified along with four other sites in initial pilot as being suitable for housing delivery, another first batch of sites that have been taken to market in that ongoing project to provide a range of sites for affordable private sale and specialist housing across the city. So this site was, is going through the approval process now. Sale has been agreed subject to contract and planning, but again, before contracts can be exchanged, the publication of public open space notices must be fulfilled as a legal requirement. These publications have generated six comments and objections from residents and under the constitution, it's a requirement that these objections are considered by Finance and Performance Policy Committee. Again, the majority of the comments that have come in are around the scale and type of development on the site, so they're not specifically against the actual public open space notice, a lot of them are targeted against the type of development coming through. So it is a recommendation to continue with the sale, as this will contribute towards a number of council objectives and there will be opportunity for formal public consultation through the planning process where comments would be considered further at that stage,
Councillor Phipps.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for the papers. I kind of disagree with that, I think this is a different position to the previous proposed disposal where the objections focused on the delivery of housing, which I agree are planning concerns and can be dealt with at that stage, but a lot of these objections focus around the value of the open space that's being discussed today. And from reading the papers and objections, it comes across that this is clearly well valued as green space, opposite the park as well, supporting biodiversity in the area and as highlighted by the objectives, has been referenced by council officers in the past as an important open space. So I'm considering that this disposal would only enable the construction of two houses, which is not a significant amount, I believe it holds more benefit to residents in the city in staying as an open space rather than being disposed of for two houses. Thank you.
I suppose in response to that comment, planning colleagues were consulted and I think in terms of planning policy, it's not regarded as formal open space and was deemed acceptable for development. I think it was a former slum clearance site where a number, I think seven houses were previously demolished on the site, so it has been laid vacant for a number of years and that's why it is now legally classed as open space, but in terms of planning policy, it's not classed as formal open space.
We discussed this in quite a lot of detail in the pre-agenda meetings because as members, we were also concerned with some of the objectives that we've received, but we were assured by officers that at the planning stage during the consultation process, these objections would be taken into consideration. It's not our remit on the Finance Committee to look at planning objections. So I get what you're saying councillor Phipps, but we, you know, this land is a formal green space? Come back in, yeah?
Thanks Chair. I think the, I mean, we're saying that it is a legal open space, whether it's acknowledged by the planning framework as an open space, I don't know. That possibly doesn't matter if planning doesn't come into it. I think by agreeing to the sale, we are saying that the land will be developed for housing and then there'll be planning considerations around how that's delivered, but if we're saying that actually the objectives, and from what I can see as raised in the objections, it holds like more value as an open space to the community, then I think that's in our remit because we're making a decision before it gets to the point of planning considerations, which would inevitably involve development of the open space. So I think it's, it is kind of in our remit to say no if we want to and that's my vote.
Thank you councillor Leavie.
Thanks Chair, mine's on, my question's on appendix two, small sites project, so this came to, this report's backed up October 21 and it was approved in February 22. Why are we nearly four years on before we started to actually do something with it?
Thank you Chair, I think there was a process to look at a number of sites, I think some of that because of the number of sites that was identified within there, I think the Housing Growth Team looked at small sites project update to bring forward a number of sites. I think as the report says, there was about 260 small sites that were identified within that, so there's been a period of due diligence to work through that with the team, as I mentioned, through some funding with Homes England, through Arabs and other colleagues to look at those. And I think the first batch of those sites were only marketed towards the end of last year and that's where they were. But it is part of an important process around how we bring forward and develop sites, brownfield sites across the city to try and increase the number of housing delivery we can across the site. I think it was asked at pre-agenda meeting Chair, to give this committee a knowledge briefing on that small sites programme and that's something we will take away and bring to a knowledge briefing, the background to that Housing Growth Programme in terms of the small sites work and also the timeline for future disposals coming forward as well.
And in terms of councillor Phipps' comments, could I ask if the objections could be forwarded on to planning so that at least the planning offices can work with residents in terms of, you know, recommendations and amendments to the planning application?
Thanks Chair, both with this report and the previous one, I'll make sure that property colleagues send forward the objections that came in through the open space process so that they log with individual planning officers so they're aware of what came through the objections to the open space notices.
Thank you. There is any further questions or comments, so there are recommendations for approval. Can I ask, are we all agreed? Okay, so can you put your hands up, who's agreeing? Six, so six, I've said yes. Two abstentions? Two against?
So was that six agreeing, two against?
Yeah, seven, he has included me.
Seven agreeing, two against.
So that's agreed, thank you very much. So seven agreed and there were two against. Thank you for that. Moving on to item, page 61 of Agenda Pack now, this is item 10, pay policy and senior officer recruitment and Jane will be presenting.
Thank you Chair. So this is the first review that I've done of the pay policy since I've been in post since January 24. And I think it's fair to say that identified what I thought was some gaps, but also things that were potentially a little bit unclear within the pay policy. And what I've tried to do is, is to kind of give that clarity, but also some more transparency in terms of the pay policy. Particularly around the recruitment of chief officers. So there was two areas that I looked at, was recruiting of chief officers and the payment of special severance. And really following that review, it was felt that the policy and the figures were updated on an annual basis, but it would really benefit for some greater clarity on how we recruit to the chief officer posts. I would refer you particularly to 2.1.7 within the committee report. And this is particularly around how we recruit to chief officer posts outside of the pay policy at salaries over £100,000. And what I've tried to do is really update to reflect current practice and remove the ambiguity around the delegations in the constitution. What I've done is to provide some clarity about the relevant salary packages are approved by the chief executive, but adds in the requirement for the chief executive to consult the Chair of the Senior Officer Employment Committee. It also removes the requirement that these considerations are done by full council before an appointment is made because it really is impractical, given the timescales required. But these will be reported to the full council, will be reported to the next available full council meeting. In terms of feedback that we received through the process and the recognition that members want oversight of these appointments at chief officer grade, it's the intention to advise the relevant committee members prior to the advert actually going live as well. So we really do want to ensure visibility and transparency, but to keep the agility that we need within the recruitment process. And as I say, all posts will be reported to the next available full council. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Fox.
Chair, can I just ask for a point of order on this Chair? I don't know whether this committee has the power to take away the sovereign body's right of this pay policy. My understanding was that the decision was with full council, so for full council to give away that power, it would be for full council to make that decision, not to go to full council and tell them that we've made the decision and therefore basically to validate that decision. Now, if this decision today is to note and then to send it forward to the full council, then for me, that would be a way forward, but for this committee to change the policy and give the power to offices away from members, I don't think that's in the role of this committee. This changes the whole process that we have done for years. And I understand if there have been flaws that have been highlighted, that's to be discussed and to be highlighted at full council. I don't think it is for us few members to take away the power of the sovereign body, which is the council. So if I could just have a ruling on that Chair before we go any further, because I think this totally changes the whole process that our this council operates at 100,000 plus officer roles and therefore takes the power away from members and gives it to officers. So I'd look forward to a ruling on that before we go any further Chair.
Thank you, thank you for your question again. What I can say is, is that it doesn't change, I think what is really a regularisation of what has been going is actually working in practice at the moment anyway, so it's not that it's changing it. And the constitution, I think at the moment just says that it has to be consulted, so it's not, it's not the approval, it's consulted there. So I mean, obviously discussing this with David Hollis, we will obviously, it's not that you cannot make that decision, it's not a sovereign right that that has to be done, you can make the decision to change the pay policy because it was within your jurisdiction and remit as this committee.
If I may Chair.
Yeah, of course.
Within the role of full council and putting forward balanced budgets, there are probably amendments to, if you want, freeze, put a moratorium on positions above. This takes away that power of that because that gives then the power to the chief executive to make those decisions and then to come back to full council. Now, my understanding is it was for full council to approve that decision of that committee who'd done the interview. Now, if this changes the full role of that, I would argue the point that this has to go to full council for a full council's decision to give away that power. If full council decide that's the way they want to go, that's fine, but for me, for this committee to do that and then just go to full council with this council's recommendations, and I think that for me, that is not outside the role. But if, as I say, if this recommendation's only to note and send it to full council for that discussion, then I'm okay with that.
That's okay with the policy, isn't it? Jane, just, I'm sorry. In terms of the pay policy now, is that obviously we're recommending, aren't we? It's, what I've been, obviously been advised by David because I'm covering for him today is that this is just something that's already happening in practice and our constitution clearly just says that it's just to note, for them to consider it, isn't it, as opposed to approve it? And that's the word and the terminology that we're talking about. So Jane, if you just pick up that word, just look at the recommendation if that's okay? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, certainly. So as I say, the Finance and Performance, in the front page it says, Finance and Performance Committee is asked to make a recommendation to full council to accept the pay policy statement as part of the 2025, 2026 budget. And yes, you are right in terms of the wording at the moment is, will be considered by the full council and what I'm trying to do is take away that ambiguity of where does that actual decision making sit with the recommendation, that it sits with the chief executive in consultation with the Chair of the Senior Officer Employment Committee.
Thanks for that clarity, but that just goes to prove then, that we're taking away from elected members and giving it to the chief executive. So for me Chair, it would be to note this and then send it to full council for the debate, that would be my way forward. And if, to move things on, I don't get us bogged down on that, maybe I'll put an amendment in if I may Chair, to do that and I'll see where other members sit. Thanks Chair.
Jane, can I just clarify, in terms of when this does go to full council, it doesn't go for approval, it's consulted, it's consulting full council, so full council isn't making a decision on that anyway? Is that correct? Is the chief exec that makes that decision? Councillor Phipps?
The constitution says full council must approve any salary package for any post that is in excess of £100,000. It says approve?
Jane may correct me because I'm mainly more about this, but there's another bit that, there's ambiguity, isn't there, when you read through it, that says, it says to consider, not just approve, and that's where we're working from. I mean, obviously this is, this is going to have, I mean, obviously you're here to look at the pay policy and approve the wording for that and then obviously it is going to full council then, for them obviously to consider as part of the budget, budget package. I think really what I really want to just convey and what David Hollis conveyed to me when he was discussing this matter was, it's not about... I think really what I really want to just convey and what David Hollis conveyed to me when he was discussing this matter was, it's not about. I think really it's not about taking any, derogating any power or taking anything away from members in people being aware of what's going on. That will, there, there will still be all of that process, all that people being aware of it and the relevant members being aware all through the process. It's just that it's about logistically getting people in, in, in place, isn't it, which is what I've been told. Yeah, thank you, Jane.
No, I, I would absolutely support that. And it's actually about giving, I suppose, that more transparency to the councils at an earlier stage. Of when we're going to be recruiting chief officers, because I don't think that happens consistently at the moment. So we want to give a better consistency in terms of visibility of when we're actually recruiting chief officers to the, to the relevant committee. But then also having a very clear understanding of how we can authorise a salary of over a hundred K in a timely way.
Am I also correct in, in, in my understanding that some, when it does come to full council, a lot of the times interviews have happened and jobs have been offered?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, yeah.
Councillor Slater?
My question was more on the process side of things. Sorry, it's maybe a newbie question. But how does it work? Do the coun, so does full council sort of say, we believe this job, whichever one it is. We could offer a hundred and forty K, say, for the sake of argument. If it's higher than that, we would want to know more. If it's less than that, we've agreed to it. Is that how it works at the moment?
So within the pay policy, you'll see that there is a number of roles already within the pay policy. So effectively, when the pay policy is agreed, those roles are agreed at that salary. If there's anything outside of that pay policy, that's when it would come to council.
Councillor Dodd?
Thank you colleagues. And this is, the question is, is my understanding correct? And I'll spell out what my understanding is. So, so in our remit as not just the finance committee, but as the policy committee with responsibility for the chief operating officer's domain. And, and under which your role in this department sits, we're being asked to make a recommendation about whether this is the right course of action to take. Such that then full council can at its meeting decide that that's what they're going to do. So at this point, we're not deciding anything other than to recommend on to someone else. And my understanding is that the, the sort of basis for why we might take that decision is one of current practice in that this is functionally what happens. But also some kind of sense that this would be the best way to get the best people in the organisation. In that we can offer them a, a clear contract with some assurance that it's not going to be undermined by a, a later process that they, they haven't been party to. I'm new here, but I, I can't imagine a situation in which we would, on a person by person basis, take a full council decision to not appoint them. That seems quite irregular. And so I, I'm comfortable with the suggestion that we would delegate that to, to offices and have council notified that that's been, that that's happened. That feels like that's what's been the current practice, but also feels like that would be a good way to take that forward. The thing that I'm taking away from councillor Fox's comments is that it sounds like this needs to be a recommendation, not just as part of the budget. But that there would be a, a consequent constitutional change that we should also recommend. I understand that there are a number of constitutional changes that go through in the ordinary course of business in that, in, in full council meetings anyway. But perhaps that's the amendment that we need to make to ensure that this is kind of consistent as, as the, as a way of resolving what you've identified as a slight anomaly between practice and policy that, that currently exists.
Sorry, oh, through you, Chair. Just to say that the constitutional amendments, they will be made obviously separately. And then that, that would be something that the monitoring officer would bring to them. So that would be a separate process. So again, it's these sort of slightly little nuances and silos that we have different authorities to do that. But you're absolutely right. For the purpose here, you're looking at the pay policy, but actually changing formally the constitution, that would be a, a separate process, yeah. Or a separate report going to members or to full council, yeah.
So this report would go to full council then because of the changes to the constitution?
Sorry, as part of the, do you want to go in? Sorry.
So I've just checked the budget report that went to full council last year. The recommendations in the full council report, which we expect will be the same for this year. One of those is to approve the pay policy as set out in an appendix. So the pay policy, as agreed, the wording here, would be submitted to full council for full approval. So that's as councillor Dodd set out, any amendments to wording would be agreed here and then taken to full council as part of the budget process as an appendix before approval. With a specific recommendation for full council to approve the pay policy.
And then at that point, any constitutional changes that do need requiring, because obviously we need some clarification on the words approve and consider, would be taken by the monitoring officer.
Is there, is there any further questions or comments? So it sounds like councillor Fox, it is going to go to full council as part of the budget report. At that stage, anybody from full council can raise any questions in regards to the pay policy review.
Thanks, Chair. Just for clarity then. So, so if that goes to full council, is there room then for full council to change the wording of the pay policy at that, at that full council? Or has, has, or is it got to be a separate, the only issue I've got here is that the budget, we're talking about eighty-four normal people from their community. Are discussing a pay policy on salaries above a hundred thousand pounds where they have decisions and maybe, and as policies are able probably to say. Well, you know what, we'll join two roles to one. Where would that discussion, et cetera, take place before it goes through that policy review? The issue I've got is that it, it, it has been in the constitution that the full council will approve. You're changing the wording now with the, with the senior committee, senior employment committee and the chief exec. You're taking, you're taking that power away from full council. I just want to know is, if that's the case at budget council. Will council have the opportunity to change this pay policy? Or has it gone too far down the road? Has it all been costed up, et cetera, et cetera? That, 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 there's a hell of a lot of work for this to come, I don't know, a few days before budget council now to, to, to agree this. So that's why I'm saying, I think, I'm more comfortable, and I'll be putting a amendment, Chair, when, when it gets to, to say that we, this committee should note this pay policy. Send it to full council within the budget report and allow the budget council, where you've got full council, to have that discussion with that. I think for us to send that recommendation forward would, would, would influence that budget council and them, them groups. You know, I mean, if groups have already had their discussions within groups and they're happy and comfortable to give the power that way, then that's fine. But I think as, as a committee, here, we ought to extend that to full council. At least then give groups an opportunity to discuss that conversation. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, through you, Chair. Just, just to clarify, the, this, this policy that we're looking at is, is within your remit. You know, you're making that decision on, 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 on the pay scales. And it's really when it gets, obviously from the, when it gets. On this one point, I'm not talking about the constitutional point because that would be separate. And that's something that's considered. So when the constitution's amended to align with what's actually happening in practice, that will be another issue. But in terms of it going up to full council, it's going up to full council in terms of the whole budget process, not on actually the nuances of the policy. So that's what really members here are here to decide, is that you're, you know, that's your decision making, not that, that to go to full council.
Thanks. For me, Chair, no, if we find, just to be clear, I, I'm debating around point twenty-five of the, the, the issue. Not the whole issue of grading, et cetera. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with all of that. It's just that, 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 I, point twenty-five takes away the power from full council. That's the point of my, my discussion. I don't want to reopen pay grades, because I'm, I'm not into that kind of game at all. I'm just on to that constitutional point on point twenty-five. That's, that's where, where I'm just so everybody's quite clear on that. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Leverie?
Thanks, Chair. The role of this committee, the finance and performance policy committee, is to approve or make recommendations on policy. Therefore, we can't just note things and pass it on. We're here to fulfil a function in terms of our remit as far as this particular item is concerned. Now, the, the annex within this document sets out the pay base for all the executives that are identified there for the following twelve months. And therefore, as a result of that, if anything changes that, that makes an offer that is above that pay level, you're in breach of this, this existing policy that has been put forward to take. So I think we should be, as a policy committee, making recommendations, not just noting. Thank you.
Councillor Fip?
Thanks, Chair. I've kind of got two questions about something slightly different, but up still on twenty-five. So it's approved by the chief executive following advice from the chair of the senior officer employment committee. Is there any reason why that's just the chair and not wider than that? Because normally even in urgent decisions, you'd have an urgent subcommittee and then there'd be cross-party representation of that. Even when it's pretty urgent for a decision to be made.
Thanks, Chair. It, it really, so, so when you're in a recruitment situation, you're often quite time pressured, particularly on these roles. And actually, we thought the right level of delegation would be to the relevant committee chair and in consultation with the chief executive. So the chief executive effectively takes that consultation advice from, from that chair. And we felt that was the right kind of delegated level for an issue like this, where you do need to have a degree of agility. An ability to act really relatively quite quickly in these kind of situations to be able to secure the best candidates in a lot of cases.
Sorry. So at this point, is this, because obviously like the committee will sit and I presume like whoever's recruited or. The recruitment process happens through the senior officer employment committee as a whole, because that's how it works, to my understanding. So for the decision that's just consulted with the chair, is that just for the initial kind of advertising of the post that to be recruited to? That kind of salary level? I just want to be clear on what we're proving, sorry.
So you would, you would go to the, you would enact this effectively if there are anything outside the pay policy? So the pay policy sets out the roles and the salaries. So for instance, if you had a role that was at a particular level that was at ninety-nine thousand, for instance, it'd probably be an ideal example. And you actually go through the recruitment process and you would advertise at that level, or you, you may leave it blank in terms of trying to attract the right people to the role. And actually, the person that you want to recruit ends up at, you know, a hundred and five thousand, for instance. So that would be outside of our pay policy. So it would be in that scenario when you would seek to get that additional approval, because it is outside the pay policy.
And normally at full council, that's when we some focus on jobs that have come through that are outside the pay review policy. Okay, councillor Leverie?
Yeah, just, just to say, having been sat on the senior officer recruitment panel for, for a few years. You go through an exhausting progress over many, many weeks to arrive at a decision. And then if you say to the candidate, well, we can't actually offer this job because we have to wait for full council. This is a situation which means you probably will lose that candidate. And is this what we really want? I, I don't think so. I think this is, this is clearly what it does. If there's, if there's any amendments, then dealing with the chair, the other policy committee. It makes eminent sense if it's, if it's marginally above the actual level that's in the pay policy document. If it's significantly done, that's a different matter. And I think in that case, then you would be calling together the, the committee, the senior officer recruitment panel. And have a discussion about that. So, but I'm back to my original position. You know, this policy committee is here to make recommendations. And I think that's what we should do. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're going to move on from this now. So just to be clear, this happens already. It is the chief executive that makes that decision and it comes through full council. And most of the time, we just nod it through anyway. Delaying this would mean that people who we have interviewed and accepted the post may walk away. Because the process is, you know, just being dragged on for longer. I did speak to legal, to David, and what I did say was, if there's any way that elected members could see posts. Job advertisements for senior officer roles before they go out, just so that we still know what's happening. Because by the time it comes to full council, the decision's already been made, jobs have already been offered. But actually, you know, to be very transparent, I, I think it'd be better for elected members to see the jobs before they go out. Just to know that this is what's going to be advertised and this is the pay grade that we're advertising.
Yeah, absolutely. And we will build that into the process where, when we're advertising a chief officer position, the relevant members of the committee will, will be advised of that beforehand, absolutely. And your summary around the, the fact that you can lose members, and councillor Leverie said very similar. That there is a real danger when you're in processes like this, that you can lose candidates if you prolong it longer than, you know, is reasonable really.
Councillor Mohamed?
I've been doing this for a while. Perhaps, you know, what tends to happen is that, yeah, we do just see the job spec and the roles. And we have changed some roles, like the chief operating officer. She's not here, she. You know, that role was created by doing, making changes. And I think the issue has always been that you, you know, you have a shortlist. And then we interview. And then obviously clearly then, things have to happen pretty quickly in terms of the candidates. And often sometimes the candidates willing to take a bit of a salary sacrifice from the current role, but not to the level. And then for me, look, I, you know, you've got your chief exec, we've appointed our chief exec, we have a chair of the committee, which is leader at council. We appoint the leader at council. And I think sometimes you just have to trust our judgement and maybe hold them accountable as well. And if the leader at council, as chair of that senior officer committee, makes a decision that's not quite right. Then we as councillors can hold him at the moment, could be a her, at some point, to account. So I get what councillor Fox is saying, but I think the realities are that I can't see the last twenty years when a senior officer appointment committee. Has decided to offer somebody a job subject to approval from council that we've gone, oh, no, I don't think we'll do that. I mean, that's the current, that is what we're doing, aren't we really? I don't think we're ever vetoed a senior officer appointment. And if we, if we were to do that, I suspect the applications from candidates will dry up pretty quickly. Because what's the point of, you know, us four or five senior officer appointment committee members doing the interview? We might as well have an interview panel of eighty-four then, don't we? So I think, Chair, we ready to move to the vote.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Mohamed. Okay, so this report does come with recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Okay. Show of hands if you're agreed. Thank you. And against? Thank you. And abstentions? Okay. So that's seven agreed, one abstention and one against. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jane. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item eleven. And this is the pay seventy-seven of the agenda pack. And the presenting officer is Adam. And this is commissioning of professional services for delivery of the council's capital programme.
Thank you, Chair. This is proposal seeking approval to start the process to procure professional services to support the delivery of the council's capital programme. By, by way of background, the council's got a, a large and ambitious capital programme to deliver. And that requires a range of professional services to deliver that. We have a, some of those resources in-house in the form of the capital delivery service. But we also have peaks and troughs in resource requirements and the need for specialist resources as well, specialist professional services as well. So we need to have external support to do that. As I say, the capital delivery service has most of those services, but, and we've grown in size over the last four years by about thirty-five percent. But it's a fine balance in terms of the level of services that we have internally based on and those that we buy in externally. Those services are paid for, are the capital budgets for the individual projects. So there's no cost of revenue budget either. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Adam, is there any questions councillor Chapman?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yeah, notice this is for a five-year period. So are we going to be, are you going to be checking it to make sure they're not going over the 30 million in five years? Just want to know that, you know, you're just going to keep tabs on the actual drawdown in costs?
Yes, we'll definitely be monitoring the spend against the budgets. But as I say, the services that will be, it's a zero value contract basically. And we'll call off on that contract as and when we require services. And those individual services are paid for against the budgets of the individual projects. So the individual projects are managed, monitored in terms of the spend on those and will also manage and monitor the overall spend against this contract.
Councillor Dodd?
Thank you and thanks for providing that overview. You mentioned that the kind of in-house part of this has grown by about a third over the last period, which is great that we're upskilling the kind of in-house workforce. This is obviously a recommission in effect of an existing external service that we've been provided, that has been provided to us. How has the balance of cost changed between that which we have procured previously and that which you're suggesting we procure now, given that no doubt the work has also grown over that time but that the in-house team has also grown?
Yeah, it's a difficult judgement to make. We don't know upfront for definite what types of service, professional services and to what extent we're going to require against the capital programme. But we do know that we need to add access to those services. In terms of the current arrangements, it's probably about a third externally to two-thirds internally. And so the basis on which we're estimating the value for the future contract is based on that roughly.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much for, sorry councillor.
Sorry, I just wanted to come in and it's a similar question to councillor Chapman really. What plans are there for kind of being able to revisit that? I guess I'm wondering, particularly given what you just said, that it's a little bit of a guessing game how much we might need. We also don't know how much our capital programme might grow or indeed shrink over the next 10-year period. It's quite a long contract even with the safety net of it being zero-based. What are the kind of plans for reviewing whether this is delivering the value that you wanted and whether we've got the balance right between internal and external resources?
Yeah, I suppose that within the contracts that we have with the provider or providers, there'll be arrangements in there to monitor their performance and, you know, how they're performing against certain KPIs. So there'll be regular reviews in place to do that. Does that answer your question?
Any further? No, there is a, can I just ask in terms of social value as well? Does that, is that also included when you are doing, when you are monitoring the outside contracts, external contracts?
Yeah, we'll be possibly or likely be procuring this through the York Consult framework and all the providers on there have been procured competitively to get onto that and have certain social value KPIs that they have to meet and then monitor against meeting through that framework. And then we'll also include similar targets in terms of social value within this particular contract as well. And we'll agree those through our in-house economic and skills team who will support us to develop those targets.
And just really quickly, what are you doing to support local Sheffield-based companies to kind of be on this procurement list? And where people struggle to get onto the procurement list? Are we providing additional support to small businesses but local Sheffield-based businesses?
Yeah, as I say, we'll be looking to procure this through the York Civil's framework and the providers are already on there. But what we do ask is, and they will need, is that they will have a tier-two supply chain working for them. And that tends to be a lot of local SMEs. But going back to the previous point about social value, that's not just about jobs and training opportunities, it's also about opportunity for SMEs as well.
Thank you, that's brilliant. Thank you very much. This report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yeah, that's all agreed. Thank you very much Adam. Moving on to the next item. This is item 12, capital approvals for month eight. And this is on page 87 of the agenda pack. And Phil will be speaking to this.
Afternoon everyone, afternoon Chair. Can everyone hear me? Okay, we've got five appendices to go through today, so quite a lot to cover but I'll pick out the key points for you. First of all, on appendix one for transport, regen and climate change, we'll be conducting feasibility on two schemes at Castle Street and Leopold Street, which will form part of the city centre connections funded by the City Region Sustainable Transport Programme. And that's about improving pedestrian and cycling connections across the city. Development work to unlock 8.5 million of funding from the combined authority to deliver five schemes in total is underway. And this is design cost for the other three are going to be brought forward in the coming months. Another scheme is the Brinkley 20 mile an hour zone as part of our 20 mile an hour zone programme. This is a budget increase of £46,000 to a budget of £82,400,000 to move from detailed design through to implementation. On public rights of way, we're assigning £139,000 of local transport funding to design upgrades on four key footpaths. And we'll be using levelling up funding at Don Valley Bowl following the award of contract to re-profile the budget in line with the contractors programme. For communities, parks and leisure, we've three species survival fund projects. One feasibility at Carford Dam where we're engaging our in-house capital delivery service to review designs and produce costings for desilting and landscaping works with a value of around £20,000. There's also a community fund allocation where we're looking to approve £20,000 of species survival monies and also a £5,000 private match funding to the Sheffield Swift Network and create a £15,000 community capital pot. And that's going to be managed by the South East Area Local Area Committee. And we've also got phase two for the Species Survival Fund which is an additional £125,000 allocation. This relates largely to the inclusion of the costs of a ranger and apprentice employed solely for the delivery of the capital elements of the project. In housing, we've got four capitalised repairs elements which total £5.2 million. These are made up of voids, fire stopping, roofing and other essential works. These represent the capitalisation of works that have already been undertaken by our in-house repair service and they've been charged to revenue budgets but we've assessed them as actually being capital in nature. So they've represented major upgrades and enhancement to properties. So replacing entire roofs, significant works to kitchens, replacing entire bathrooms, big upgrades of fire safety provisions and also big work such as underpinning. Good news story, this, we've been working for a number of months with our repair service on this rather than stuff landing at the last minute. So we've got real confidence, we've got robust figures here. We shouldn't be having too many of these going forward. We've got a number of contracts in place, either in place now or imminent, that are going to pick up a lot of these capital works. There may well be a few small capitalised repairs that the repair service undertake. But we shouldn't be seeing anywhere near the figures that we've got here at the moment. It's entirely right that those are undertaken by separate contractors and the repair service focuses on those revenue repairs. We've also got the Homes Upgrade Grant Two. This was a scheme you might recall from last year to install energy efficient measures in homes off the gas grid. We had a bit of a slow start on this one in common with a lot of other local authorities. And as a result of that, central governments have relaxed the rules which has led to an increase in applications. So we've been awarded, good news story, a further £600,000 which gives us a total budget of £1.8 million. And then finally, we've got the block allocation which is just drawing down to fund the capitalised repair works. On education, children and families, we're going to be spending £39,000 of high needs capital for feasibility works at Stocks Bridge Junior Send Special Educational Needs and Disabilities Integrated Resource. We're going to look at creating a 10 to 20 place integrated resource using that former caretaker's bungalow. So recycling an existing property. And at Old Dean House, our capital delivery service have negotiated a £48,000 saving on the final account. On strategy and resources, fire risk assessment, FRA works at Low Edge's housing office. We need an extra £30,000 for passive works. So that gives us a total budget for that scheme of £174,000. We have confidence that we're going to be retaining that building going forward as part of the building's review. And we've also got the essential compliance and maintenance capital receipts allocation drawing down the £30,000 to fund that scheme. An appendix two, we've got some conditional approvals this month pending confirmation of successful bids for funding. So we're requesting a conditional approval to allow schemes to progress as soon as the outcomes are known. Sometimes we've got real pressures on delivery timescales and a key worry at the moment is potential shifts in market prices as a result of funding announcements. So we need to get out of the trap quickly. We've got two for communities, parks and leisure, both youth investment fund, one at Wind Gardens and one at Stanington Pavilion providing new youth facilities. The Wind Gardens one is on an existing brownfield site of a former demolished tower block. And at Stanington, we're replacing the existing pavilion which is in a state of disrepair and will lead to a number of sustainability improvements with a property that is far cheaper to manage and far more sustainable. On housing, we've got a conditional approval for the Social Decarbonisation Housing Fund, energy efficiency. This is asking you to authorise spend of up to £14.3 million dependent on the outcome of our bid to central government. So that's an £8.6 million grant matched by £5.6 million from the housing revenue account. This is fun to deliver fabric improvements such as insulation and improved windows and improved doors to up to 1,800 council homes and up to 150 air source heat pumps there as well. We're putting in a new bid, we're putting in a new bid for the Warm Homes Local Grant which is authorising spend of up to £12.9 million of grant funding, solely grant funding depending on the outcome of the bid to deliver energy efficiency improvements to approximately 887 private homes throughout the city. That should improve EPC ratings that are currently in the range of D to G up to C. And obviously we've got the block allocation which is going to be reduced to fund that match element of the Social Decarbonisation Housing Fund bid. In appendix three, this is the details of the formal grant offers received to be accepted by the council. So on levelling up fund, on the Castle site, we want to accept £5 million of gain share funding to support the levelling up scheme. On transforming cities, on Housing Zone North, we're looking to accept a grant of an additional £1.2 million to fund increased costs for additional drainage. The existing underground asset was inadequate, so that will fund the additional drainage needed and additional signing and lining work following responses to the draft traffic regulation orders. There's also a couple of minor increases in scope following initial planning of existing pavements requiring some enhanced surfacing on top. And good news as well, we've secured £1.3 million of Brownfield Housing Fund to support the existing Newfield General Needs Scheme. That's going to support the additional cost of the scheme due to remediation work required on that site. Appendix four contains the details of the grants to be accepted, subject to the formal offers of funding. And they relate to the Social Decarbonisation Housing Fund and the Warm Zone Grants that I talked about in appendix two. And as previously described, we're just asking for approval, conditional approval so we can get swift mobilisation as soon as those grants are announced. And finally, appendix five, it's the details of the grants issued to third parties. As I've already referred to in appendix one, the grants have been made to Sheffield Swift Network and the Community Fund in relation to the Species Survival Grant. I'll draw breath, quite a lot covered there. Any comments or questions?
Thank you very much for that councillor Mohammed.
Got a couple of questions and I'll comment. So obviously in terms of some of the page 104, 110, it's all the kind of capital works that have been taking place on council housing, I assume it will be. I'm just trying to get my head around about how much of this work's already happened and it's been done by the councillor and you're just trying to move from one budget to the other. And how much of this work is still left to do and will any of this work be actually contracted out? In terms of having non-council contractors doing the work? Whether you get any of that detail, could you get it for me if it's not available to hand? Microphone.
Apologies councillor Mohammed, yes, some of these contracts have already been approved. They weren't within the original scope of the in-house repair service, that these major capital repairs. So we have a new contract with Fortum which is covering the voids and elementals contract. There's been some issues with delivery, obviously we've had a large backlog as you're aware of voids and we need to get those, bring those back into circulation as soon as possible. So that new contract's in place to tackle those. And those, the chunk of the voids work and the elemental repairs will be going through Fortum. There's a new roofing contract in place, I know this has been a particular bugbear of councillor Leverie that will be in place finally after two years, hopefully in August. So again, that's capital works which is outside of the scope, I understand, of the in-house repair service. That is also, not to say that the repair service will not be undertaking those works going forward. There has been an increase in the in-house workforce to undertake roofing repairs but they are of responsive and emergency in nature whereas these are dealing with larger capital schemes that the larger contracts are equipped to deal with and the in-house contractor, I understand, is not. Does that answer your question?
Move on to another bit of the question. It is around Wind Gardens and Stanington Pavilion. If I look at the paperwork, it talks about completion August 25. Pretty ambitious if we still haven't got the money in the bank. I mean, how imminent is this decision? I know whenever I've gone up to Stanington with Penny Baker, we've looked at that pavilion and I keep saying to her, we used to have one of those in Tinsley in the 1970s. You know, it is well past its age by the way, the one in Stanington. So when is the timescales for a potential decision?
I think the non-technical answer is really imminent. We're expecting that news any day now. I think to give you some comfort, because I absolutely accept, you look at the timescales for completion, really? However, those two youth centres are going to be delivered using modern methods of construction. So there's been a lot of planning, those of you who are aware of modern methods of construction. The end-to-end time for completion is usually the same as for a normal scheme. However, you put a lot more effort in upfront in terms of that planning and then the actual delivery on-site is really short. I'm sure you've all seen on Grand Designs where buildings have gone up in like a weekend. I'm not saying they're going to be up in a weekend, but I am not as concerned at the actual delivery of those schemes, bearing in mind they're both MMC and have been in planning, but I understand now for pretty much a year, maybe slightly more.
The final point Chair is obviously around this potential for additional money to deal with the council houses and affordable warmth. Do we know where the air source heat pumps, it's about 150, the number was, where are we going to have those? Because it'd be interesting to see if we can get them on some slightly different property types to just to learn some lessons. I don't know if that's in the thinking or not. If it's not, could we look at that? Because clearly this is going to be the way forward. If we're going to phase out gas boilers, then air source heat pumps is possibly the place to go. But we need to learn some lessons from it. Thank you Chair.
Absolutely right councillor Mohammed, that is in the thinking. That's quite a chunk of the thinking. It's also driven by which properties are the right ones to tackle in order to get the EPC lifted up to AC in order to be able to draw down the funding. So that's the other criteria which takes place. There is a separate programme for delivering air source heat pumps that I think a business case is going to be brought forward for within the next two to three months where those will be installed by the in-house repair service. And again, that will deal with precisely the point that you've raised, we're looking at a range of archetypes.
Thank you very much councillor Chapman.
Yes, thank you Chair. Can we go back to appendix one, page 109? And these are the properties that are off the gas grid. I wondered, do we know how many of these people were actually? I wondered, do we know how many of these people were actually in need of support? They're going to have high heating bills if they're off the gas grid, might have had lots to do and may no longer be getting a winter fuel allowance. So I wondered whether we knew if any of these people were in special need?
I'm not aware of that councillor Chapman, but I'm happy to take that forward and do a separate response.
Councillor Slater?
Oh yeah, so page 118, I guess it's building on councillor Mohammed's question. How are we selecting the 1,700 homes? And will that cover all of them? Or let's say all of the grade G or whatever, will it work that way? Basically, what's the selection criteria? Yeah, that's it.
Thank you councillor Slater. This was the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund properties. How have we selected those? So that's been undertaken by our asset management team. And again, it's a very similar response to the one I gave to councillor Mohammed. It's the ones where we can make the biggest impact to take them from a certain EPC rating up to another EPC rating. There are quite tight criteria from the government that allows only certain levels of upgrade to attract funding. So we are basically trawling through our asset list, our asset register to identify those properties that will attract that funding and will be uplifted from a certain EPC rating up to a C. That's the sole criteria.
Is the logic, we're taking the 1,700 worst homes and we'll upgrade them? Is that the kind of logic?
I can double check, I think in broad terms councillor Slater, yes, that is the case. But I think we need to, I probably need to check with the asset management team. There may be some properties that are particularly hard to treat, where some measures may not be covered by this particular grant funding, which would then mean that even if we did some interventions, they may not hit EPCC and therefore wouldn't attract the funding. So I don't want to tie myself in knots on this, but the broad principle of what you're saying is absolutely right. Obviously, it's a case of worst first wherever possible. But I can't guarantee that every single one would fall in that category, if that makes sense.
Councillor Fitz?
Thank you Chair, and thanks Phil for the report. Yeah, loads of good stuff in there, particularly around the insulation and installation of air source heat pumps that colleagues have raised. My question relates to a question I raised by email, which I think you partially answered, but I just wanted to raise again. How do we kind of capture the impact of approving external funding applications that committees come to us with on other notional plans of theirs? So like on the transport, it was just a specific example, like approving the use of SIMCA funding for the city centre scheme, how that affects notional plans for the other schemes? Because it's something that we might support, but it's hard for us to kind of gauge, like how it actually impacts it. And until recently, I didn't think it had any impact, to be honest. I thought, kind of, you're coming for more money from SIMCA, that's not us. Shouldn't really affect anything other than that scheme is costing more and SIMCA are paying for it. But do you think there's a way that we can kind of have conversations with committees around this?
It's a good point you raised councillor Fitz. I would suggest there's not many instances where that's happened, where you've had to team and ladle between schemes. But I know exactly the schemes that you're referring to. It is incumbent upon our clients to ensure that any changes to scope, anything material, goes back to the original approving policy committee. And I think you were, hopefully you were reassured by the email correspondence from the assistant director for transport, that the Transport Region and Climate Change Committee have been fully cited on those potential changes. Happy to look at that again offline councillor Fitz, no problem. But I don't think it's a major issue. In terms of transport specifically, I know they bring an annual programme, usually to the April or May committee. So we should be able to have full visibility of what's coming forward over the year. And any changes to that obviously need to be signed off by that committee. I would also suggest as well that the policy committees should all have seen or be about to see their version of the capital strategy, which also contains, in most cases, individual schemes. If not individual schemes, areas of potential investment with sufficient detail to enable the policy committee to sign off that direction of travel. So I take your point about changes, but hopefully those policy committees have been fully consulted. If a policy committee has not been consulted, no decision should be brought to this committee to be taken.
Thank you councillor Dodd.
Thanks, I've got one small observation and then a kind of broader process question. So on the Species Survival Scheme, as colleagues have mentioned, there's lots of exciting things coming through for our approval in this one. And I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that the, I think the Swift Network have probably been quite successful in promoting their cause recently, because I know that the East Lac is also going to be partnering with them to do some work around Norfolk Heritage Park and thinking about how we can bring Swift bricks, both to benefit the park, but also to do as a sort of show and tell about the benefits of Swift bricks for individual householders. And I'm just flagging it because I think if there are other parts of the council who are also looking at doing this, there might be opportunities to link things together a bit and have a bit more of a strategic conversation with the Swift Network folk who seem very keen to do things with us. And so if we can pass that back through you to the team, that'd be really helpful. My broader question starts with a thank you, which is that I know we've been asking in previous sessions to make sure that our colleagues on policy committees are briefed about the things that come to us before they come to us. And I noticed on the two major transport schemes this time, that there has been a knowledge committee briefing happening in October, so we can be reassured that the sort of policy substance of these schemes has already been given due diligence by some of our colleagues. But I guess that throws up for me a question, kind of maybe similar to the lines of colleagues, about what's the question we're being asked if the committee colleagues, the policy committee colleagues have already sort of said that they think this is a good thing? And the question for me is, is this the right amount of money to spend this on? And looking through the information that we've been given, it would be really helpful, particularly where there are schemes that perhaps have multiple different types of expenditure, like some things in this are on advertising and communicating to residents that this scheme exists, for example, in addition to paying a builder to build the thing or doing it, you know, there's like lots of different parts to it. It would be helpful if we could see more of a breakdown of that, so that we can understand in the 749,000 that we're spending, what's that on and does that feel proportionate? So that we can have a better sense of answering the question that we've been asked, rather than answering or trying to re-answer the questions that policy committee colleagues might already have been asked.
Thank you councillor Dodd, happy to take that feedback on board. I can reassure you that all of that detail is contained in each of the business cases. There's a detailed breakdown of funding and what that funding is going to be used for. I would suggest we can make these papers incredibly long, it's a fair watch for today. I understand members see these papers in advance, more than happy if there's any particular extra detail that members require. Happy to feed that in, if you could let us know beforehand, we'll ensure that that's picked up. And I am mindful of your comment that you like a little more detail in there.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? Some really important projects that have come through this month. You know, there's lots of work that's going on and it's going to benefit people who live in Sheffield. This recommendation does ask if we approve it. Are we all okay? Are we all agreed? Yeah, that's all agreed. Thank you very much, Phil, for that. Moving on to item 13, which is on page 153 of the agenda pack. And this is the Budget Monitoring Report and it's going to be delivered by Jane.
Thank you Chair, my name's Jane Wilby, I'm Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting. And the paper is to bring you the financial position for the council for quarter three of 2425, which is nine months of actual income and costs up to December 24, plus a three-month forecast. The outterm position is that of a 34.8 million overspend for the council, which is 7.1% of our net revenue budget, which is 800,000 worse than the estimated position at the second quarter mark. The council will fund the overspend with specific provision that was being set aside for housing subsidy loss and the remainder of the Budget Contingency Reserve. I won't go into great detail, but give you some overall highlights of the movements, which were in adult social care, the budget worsened by 1.5 million, which was driven by care costs in our purchasing budgets, largely within learning disabilities, due to slippage on savings and recovery plan mitigations and ongoing placement of clients in high-cost packages. This takes the overall overspend in learning disabilities to 9.3 million of the total 11 million overspend within the Adult Social Care Committee budgets. The children's position worsened by 2.3 million, which is now an overspend of 16.2 million. The movement related to the recognition of a further 2.1 million income that will not be received this year to reflect partners' contributions for council-provided services. Other areas of pressure in children's relate to home-to-school transport. In December, we had 2,478 receiving this service, which is costing over 22.7 million to deliver, which is 7.1 more than the available budget. Extensive work has taken place to introduce and expand less expensive and more independent travel options for new and existing passengers, which include using travel trainers to promote independence and shift to personal travel budgets. A consultation on post-16 travel support has just concluded to ensure that young people are better prepared for adulthood and to reduce the burden on council costs. Costs in temporary accommodation improved by 600,000 within the quarter as a direct result of the targeted work that's happening in the service, which includes the voids improvement project, which is working to turn around our vacant properties and bring them back into use alongside a change in our allocations policy and further operational improvements in the services processes. They've all contributed to a reduction in the numbers in temporary accommodation from 332 in October down to 270 in December. We still have the issue with subsidy loss in supported exempt accommodation, which is shown in the Finance and Performance Committee budgets. We noted an improvement in this budget line in the quarter of a million pounds, but this related to an improvement on our bad debt provision on housing benefit in general, reflecting a lower debt base and a higher collection rate. We've not yet forecast any impact of the work relating to exempt accommodation, but there has been some positive action in this area, including some additional focused resource to scrutinise claims and the claim process to ensure that support is being given to those in need and is also potentially leading to a higher reject rate. There's also been some key supplier engagement with strategic directors to encourage registration as social landlords, which will bring greater benefits around regulation and reduction of subsidy loss. In HRA, the Repairs and Maintenance Service is reporting an overspend of 7.3 million, largely a result of the ageing stock and the additional work on voids and a high reliance on subcontractors and agency staff to fulfil demand. Savings delivery is at 93% against targets, which is 2.6 million of savings that are forecast as undeliverable. This has been captured in our overall planning processes for the 2526 budget position, which will be presented to the Strategy and Resources Committee on Wednesday. The council has set a balanced budget for 2526 and has looked to address some of these key areas of budget challenges as part of that allocation process this year, which has been guided by a priority-based budgeting approach. The local government finance settlement provided a higher than anticipated level of funding and provided growth in core spending power of 9.4%, which was above the national average of 6.4%. It's important to note that this is still a real terms cut when compared to 2010 funding levels. The council's reserve strategy is also set out as part of the proposed budget and overspends and budget gaps that we've seen, the council's used 69.3 of reserves over the last four years, of which 26.9 relates to 2425. The Budget Contingency Reserve will be fully utilised if this position remains the same by the end of the year. And if overspends occur next year, the use of specific earmark reserves will be required to support services. The council will continue to assess the reserve's position to ensure it remains sufficient enough to meet future risks. The Future Sheffield Transformation Programme is our strategic approach to a council-wide change programme that will help us modernise the way that we work and deliver a balanced budget and will capture some of the key challenges that we currently face. The detail in the appendices include detailed monitoring information for committee budgets. The second appendices is the capital programme monitoring for quarter three, which Phil will give you a brief overview of shortly. The Treasury Management Outterm Position is appendix number three, which is closely linked with the capital programme and shows our plans for capital financing and borrowing requirements. No new borrowing is planned for 2425 and economic conditions have seen interest rates remain high and not full and as anticipated, which supports our decision to delay borrowing until necessary and is more cost-effective as we're able to rely on our cash balances to fund activity. There are no plans to reschedule any debt this year, but two lender option, borrower option loans were called by lenders this year due to the market conditions and it is likely that others may be called, which we are actively managing this. Interest from investments have remained strong and returning us an average of over 5% over the past 12 months. The fourth appendices is the Collection Fund, which states that the end of December, the local share of the fund is forecasting a surplus of 10.2 million, which doesn't affect the 2425 outterm position, but has been accounted for within 2526 budgets. So Phil, I don't know if you want to give some highlights of the capital monitoring position?
Thanks Jane, thank you Chair. I'll walk you through quickly the monitoring report as at month nine. Section one shows the current size of the capital programme and summarises the changes since your last reports for month six. Focusing on the current year, the budget's reduced from 193.6 million to 169 million and that's as a result of the re-profiling exercise which we presented to you in December. Section two shows us that the forecast outterm position at the end of December 24 was 157.5 million and that was against an approved budget of 169.4 million. So this is a variance of 11.9 million compared to a variance of 38.9 million at the end of December. And again, that's largely the result of the re-profiling exercise in December. The table summarises the position for each policy committee area and you'll see that the main variances relate to housing, where we're 7.7 million below budget. That's due largely to the stock increase allocation, which will not be drawn down this year and is being re-profiled as part of the annual HRA Housing Revenue Account Business Plan Refresh. And on Strategy and Resources, spend on the GP hubs, the three transformational hubs is progressing. That's underwritten by the Integrated Care Board, the ICB. We're still awaiting formal acceptance of funding from NHS England, which will trigger the formal approval of the budget. So we've had conditional approval for those schemes, you'll recall, we're still waiting to get the final budgets finalised. Moving to section three, that highlights the top 10 schemes which are forecasting to spend over the current approved budget over the lifetime of the scheme. Items highlighted in green are awaiting approval and that means that solutions are identified and the variance will be removed when the budgets are approved. The one where we've got an overspend without the current solution and is an issue is the 4 million potential overspend on the Castle Gate side. That's been driven by increased costs as a result of the archaeological finds. There's been increasing costs of the decouverting works as the design work has progressed. And of course, that's also led to extensions of time to this contract as a result. So it's felt that seeking additional funding is the most likely solution to this as certain outputs need to be achieved in order to meet funders' requirements. That work is in hand. On section four, the averaging forecasting completion over the quarter is above the 90% target at 93%. As you'll all be aware, an ongoing issue in the capital programme has been levels of slippage. We're not bad compared to other authorities, but obviously when we are trying to deliver schemes on profile, slippage is not good news. So the accuracy of monthly forecasting is monitored to give an early indication of emerging slippage. And the graph at 4.2 compares the actual expenditure incurred each month against that which was forecast in the prior month. There are some areas, and it's the usual suspects here, that are proving the most difficult to forecast. So for example, property acquisitions due to changes in completion dates, grant payments to third parties, which can be reliant on information being received from claimants. And that's what's been the major contributory factor to the December position, where a single grant payment of 8.8 million pounds in relation to the Centre for Child Health Technology was expected to land in December and it slipped to January due to the finalisation of legal issues. There is however, as you'll know, a level of over-optimisation within traditional schemes. We detail these variances to the Capital Delivery Service to support their drive to improve forecasting and further training. And we also provide some more guidance to project managers. A key piece of work we're undertaking at the moment is to ensure we get the budget set correctly for the start of the new financial year, to drive out that over-optimism at the start of the year, so we can have confidence that we're going to deliver to budget as the year progresses. So in essence, getting off on the right foot. The graph at 4.3 shows a potential The graph at four point three shows a potential spread of out term positions compared to the current forecast. We also include a profile of expenditure for twenty three twenty four as a comparator. Spend levels have been low in the first nine months of the year at ten point three five million pounds per month, which is below the average of fourteen point nine million in twenty three twenty four, and that's reflected in the forecast out term position of model two. Even the most optimistic model indicates further potential slippage of thirteen and a half million pounds. We were expecting an increase in spend levels to begin in August and September, but this hasn't occurred, and the spike in October was caused by a one off payment in relation to the purchase of the new council housing at Corker Bottoms. Overall, we're forecasting to spend a further sixty four million pounds in the final quarter of the year, which, given current levels of spend, I think is unlikely. So we've targeted the key managers of projects which are forecasting the largest proportion of this to query the accuracy of those assumptions, and we'll report back in the next meeting. Finally, on section five, the risks in relation to Castle Gates, we've already discussed as part of the overspends. Other major issues to be aware of, which you will all know, it's been in the capital strategy, is the existing corporate, education and housing estates where the requirements of backlog and lifecycle maintenance are significantly in excess of the available resources, and that's going to require some tough decisions around prioritisation. Also, the transforming cities fund transport programmes, as councillor Fitz has referred to earlier, are showing significant increases in costs following their extended design phases, and that's going to place pressure on delivery timescales and therefore, as a result of that, probably significant reprioritisation of the city region's sustainable transport funding to fund these as well. Work is ongoing with M C A to source alternative sources of funding and to reprofile some of those schemes, so hopefully we can progress with those over the coming year or two. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. councillor Everie?
I have a couple of revenue and one capital question. So where we are now this year, we're looking at if we delivered ninety percent of our B I Ps, ninety three percent, I think, that's forty million saved, and yet we're still overspend by thirty five million. So if we hadn't done the B I Ps, we would be in a real state in terms of finances. So the reserves have gone, the support operations, but now we're moving to a policy where we're going to have additional funds within the key areas of adults and children's to support it. Now, with a seven point one percent overspend of net budget and with adults seven point four and children nine point six overspend, are we confident that we have got sufficient funds within those budgets to see those two committees through to the end of the year? That's the first question. Can I leave it at that one first?
I think what we've done this year is ensure that through the business planning process, and I think we've tried to make sure that we've had an appropriate allocation towards those key areas of pressure. So this year, we've got a current overspend of around seven million in S E N transport, home to school transport. There's an extra six point six million gone into the budget for this year to cover the S E N transport issue. So clearly, there's still some targets to be made and some savings to be made in that area. We've seen similar things across some of those key areas of pressure. We know that we've got issues in temporary accommodation and in S E A, supported exempt accommodation. We've got some targeted actions and action plans that are in place. We've still got some provision to cover those areas into next year. So I think those key areas of pressure, there's been some real, you know, more detailed analysis in terms of addressing some of those underlying budget issues. So I think we do feel more confident that we've got better budget coverage from month one, really, as we move into the next financial year. That being said, we can't take the foot off the gas. We have to keep on delivering upon those plans and those savings plans that we do have in each of the different service areas. And of course, there's emerging pressures coming through all the time, particularly in social care, where we're seeing costs of packages continuing to increase, and that's really where the issues have been, particularly within adult social care and also within children's as well. We're seeing numbers really sustaining at a similar level, but actually the cost increasing because we're getting the odd packages that are really, really expensive, which, you know, just increase that baseline so significantly. So I think as we move into next year, there needs to be some further targeted work addressing and revisiting that, the review work that we've kind of been trying to get on top of in previous iterations of savings plans. The point that you make about how we move forward with a, you know, we set a balanced budget and we've delivered all our savings plans, if we'd have not have done that, you're absolutely right. I think what we've seen in previous years is poorer delivery of those savings plans, which have been baked into the baseline budget position. So under delivery of those savings has meant that we're, you know, we're building overspends on consolidating on previous years. So I think what we'll be doing next year is we're addressing some of the issues through business planning, but there still will be some challenges. And I don't, I think, I wouldn't like to put my money on saying I'm largely confident in a lot of areas, but I think certainly we've got a lot of better grip and more robust action in certain areas, and I think we need to maintain that, the process of working with services on the delivery of their, of the financial plans throughout the year.
Thank you, because at the end of the day, we might have had a better settlement, but over the average, it's been given, it's only two and a half percent, and we can't afford to overspend by seven point one percent. So, yeah, I still think this is a hugely challenging year coming up. On the revenue, I was just going to mention my favourite topic, repair and maintenance. I mean, with seven point three million overspend this year, the budget's been jacked up again. We're chucking another five million in the pot for capital, to capitalise some of the work that's doing. It still feels to me, year on year, that we're not in control of this activity. This is growing and growing. We're now talking about twelve million pound plus, over and above a budget of fifty million. So I would be interested to see if we, when we have our new director of housing in place, what the plan is to get in control of this. Thanks for that, just a comment. On capital, there was a significant increase in the capital allocation for housing, which will have included general fund money going in as well, so for next year, but we still delivered a shortfall in spending of seven point three million this year. So what confidence have we got that with this conditional increase in money, it's going to get spent? And if it doesn't get spent, or there's no indication of it getting spent, will it get reallocated to other areas from the general fund? Or will it roll over? So if you understand what I mean. Because can we actually get a report at the earliest opportunity to this committee that tells us what the situation is with housing and whether they will deliver financially in full for this coming year? Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Everie. I do have greater confidence in housing's ability to deliver on the capital programme this year. Getting those larger contracts in place is going to enable us to accelerate spend. I'm happy to take away your query about general fund and report back to you next month.
councillor gentleman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a quick question. Was the council's commitment in the national insurance uplift fully funded by the government?
Thank you for the question. So it wasn't, so we estimate there's a three million pound pressure for the council to bear, and that's included in the report to Strategy and Resources Committee for this Wednesday. So no, our full cost of national insurance was not covered by government grants.
Can you just turn your mic off?
Thanks, Chair. Being a member of this council for a large number of years and being a cabinet member and also being leader of this council, I've had to make some absolute severe savings that we would never have under normal circumstances under that last Tory government that put austerity into us. What I'd like to know, for the last three years under the committee system, the last budgets have just, the trend is just astronomical. As a cabinet, we would have made holistic changes throughout the year. So I'd like to know, off officers, what lessons are we learning as we go into this cabinet system of how we can get control of this? I know with this committee, we've had the directors, but it's obvious the policies cannot be working for us to sit here now with thirty five million overspend. Our reserves are near the bottom. Other councils are rushing into one one four, and I'm not suggesting that we're near there at the moment, but we're not far away. We need to know what is and isn't working as members within this system that we're working, so that we're able to make those interjections, those amendments to policy, what is working and what isn't. And so for me, it'd be good to know what are the lessons learned this year, because we have tried to take actions, and as we've heard today, you know, that we're still getting larger overspends. So what lessons are we learning and how can we implement them? And where will we be able to have that deep dive into this later on? I've been a massive advocate of, anybody who knows me, priority budgeting, I've been pushing, I'm looking forward to us getting into that. I really do believe that we will get some control back. Not saying we haven't got control now, but I think we will get a more reactive control as quickly as possible. So if I may, what lessons have we learned so far in these last three years under this system? And what can we put in? And what policies would we like to see from the finance department for members to take on board? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I think the council is focusing on the Future Sheffield Programme, and I think that's a very critical initiative aimed at transforming services. I think that will play a major role over the coming years in terms of our overspend within the budget, but I'll pass it over to Philip if he does anything.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Fox. So I think certainly over the last year, and you know, that's been our focus certainly while I've been here in post, has been looking at some of those issues that require fundamental changes, and some of those require policy changes, and some of those require a lead in time before we see the impact of those. So an example of that would be in housing, where we've looked at the housing allocations policy around temporary accommodation and how we use our accommodation to support temporary accommodation more effectively. Those policy changes have come through now. We're starting to see the impact of that in the numbers, but there's a lag between deciding what to do, having the right decision made, and then seeing the impact in terms of the outturn numbers, and we're starting to see that trajectory change in temporary accommodation. Some of those policy decisions will be difficult and unpopular, and we can look to, you know, social care, whether there are policy changes that will be coming through committees in the next few months, where we can see that, you know, proposals are being made that will be difficult to make, but will be the right things to do for those committees. So those are starting to come through now, and I think there's been a lag in terms of identifying what those policy changes should be and then bringing them through, but they're coming through now, and we're starting to see the impact of those. But there was a sort of a delay in taking the decision and then seeing the impact in the outturn. It's not like turning the tap off where you just make a decision and suddenly the money stops flowing. Actually, there's a trajectory where that decrease happens, but we are starting to see that, and I think we've got confidence that we'll continue to see that. And as we get into the priority based budgeting, sort of more in earnest, we will start to see areas where actually we can say, there's an area there where we just stop spending because it's not meeting a priority, and there are areas where we will say, absolutely, these are priorities that we need to continue to meet, and we need to continue to put more funding into those because they're more of a priority.
And thanks for that, Phil. Would it be officers' recommendations then, that where along in this process, because we get budget monitoring, we get updates, if we believe as members that policy's not working, what, where along the line in this committee, would we be able to either send a recommendation back to that committee to say that, you know, we believe that a more stringent look at that? I'm just wondering where that control is. I don't want to get back to making some of those draconian cuts that we made over the certainly last twelve years, ever having to come past, and I understand there's some real difficult decisions in other committees to come, but certainly along the line, what we can't do is not take those decisions and then look to the public and say, just like in Birmingham, there's a fifteen percent council tax. We cannot be able to say there's cuts like that in the surface and ask people to pay more. So as members, where along in this process would you say that we may have to take some of that kind of stringent test and hand it over to other committees where we're in our recommendations?
I think that would be comments from the committee that would be passed on to other committees and other policy committees for them to take on board and enact.
We've started doing that quite a bit recently, and as you notice, on the finance and policy committee, some of the directors do attend more frequently, so we can ask them the questions, especially when there's a budget update. But we can also invite them to our pre briefing meetings as well, and we can really have a conversation there too. So, you know, there is that scope for that conversation to take place with other policy committees. Okay, any councillor?
So just to add, we do also take budget monitoring reports through to the policy committees, and so we do have, you know, the opportunity to feed in to the work of those committees as well, and we work with the services to produce those reports.
Just on that, if I may, Chair, apologies to colleagues, but we don't get to see them feedbacks from them committees. That's the issue I'm coming from. So that discussion may be added, and it may be a vigorous and prickly conversations, but as a committee, we don't get to see that with the update. It'd be good to see some of those conversations or even those resolutions or whatever recommendations there, that come back to this committee.
Thank you, councillor Dodd.
Thank you, and it's interesting conversation, colleagues. I suppose I'm looking beyond the life cycle of this update and thinking about as we hopefully approve the budget for next year in a few weeks' time, but then start looking ahead to this three year settlement that we've got coming down the line and the kind of opportunities that that presents for some of the changes and some of the things that we might want to do differently with that kind of increased autonomy that that will give us. And I suppose one of the things that we benefit from as a committee, looking across all of the different policy committees, is that sense of how do all of these different aspects sit together and what are the overlaps between different services that the council might be providing? And the other place in which that's most obvious is in the household itself, where any individual household is accessing adult services, children's services, housing repairs, school transport, and any number of different things from the council. And one of the things that I've been kind of wondering about and thinking about in the work that the team's been doing on both the finance and the performance side of things is where we might be able to look at what those kind of households of high demand and how we might better knit together the way that the council is providing support to those households as a cost saving measure, but also as a service improvement, outcome improvement measure. And so it's a sort of thought at this point, but it's something to take back into your teams in the work that you're doing to kind of prepare us for that three year settlement. It would be really interesting if we could see where there might be, you know, households using kind of multiple aspects of our support, where we've got existing initiatives like team around the family and things like that, that are bringing together, as I understand it, largely within services, if you like, within children's or within adults, but where there might be opportunities to have more of a joined up approach across the different aspects of the council's work as it impacts any given household. So it's a sort of thought for us to use the benefits that we've got in this forum of being able to see across the different services.
Thank you. I think you'll see some of that coming through Future Sheffield. So one of the strands of Future Sheffield is customer experience, which is not directly linked to what you've said, but it incorporates a lot of those areas where we're bringing services together and treating people as an individual, and looking at all aspects of contact with the council, not just service by service by service, we're bringing that all together, so that when people do contact us, the person that they speak to has access to the information across all services, not just, I can only respond to you on this service, and if you want something from housing, then I'm going to have to pass you on to someone from housing. Actually, we're one organisation, and we should be able to respond to all those queries at once, rather than saying, well, I can only deal with this particular query, and I needed to hand you over to someone else. Now, there will be, there will be... Now, there will be moments where actually we do have to hand people to specialists who really understand the detail of something, but actually, for the majority of calls, we should be able to have that conversation with people where we can cover everything at once. Part of that is bringing together the data and information we hold, they're often on disparate systems that are spread across services, so pulling that information together is something we're working on now, so that actually we do have that information in one place, so that we can provide that information. But you're right, there will be services and there will be households who have accessed multiple services, and we need to understand the most effective way of providing those for people.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the update, Jane. So we are being asked to note the updated information on the twenty-four twenty-five revenue budget. Are we all agreed? Yeah, that's all agreed. Thank you very much. That concludes today's meeting. Our next meeting is on seventeenth of March at two P M. Thank you, colleagues.